Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. The Select Choir from Cortland High School is an audition chamber choir that meets during the regular school day. Throughout the year, Select Choir performs in formal concerts, at district assessment, and in the community. Many students in this group represent Spotsylvania County at district and state events. This evening, we will hear selections from the upcoming winter concert, "Betelehamu", an African folk tune transcribed by Jonathan Crutchfield, which features members of the Cortland Percussion Ensemble. "Silent Night", arranged by Edwin Fissinger, and "Deck the Halls", arranged by Alice Parker and Robert Shaw. The Select Choir is under the direction of Catherine Elliott.
We are glad that we have a Father to trust. We are glad that we have a Father to rely upon. Where was Jesus born? In Bethlehem, the city of wonder. That is where the Father was born for sure. Praise be to Him. We thank you for this day, gracious Father. Praise be to you, merciful Father.
Spotsylvania County Middle School Students had the opportunity to enter the Homeland Heroes Writing Contest sponsored by Berkshire Hathaway Home Services and J.G. Wentworth Home Lending. Students were asked to write an essay about a hero in their life or submit a letter written to a hero thanking him or her for their service. This evening, we would like to recognize the following students as the winners in this year's competition. In first place, from Battlefield Middle School, we have Brittany Connor, who won first place with her essay about her grandfather who served in the Vietnam War. If Brittany would come forward, please. With us this evening, from Freedom Middle School, we have Cara Hayden, who won second prize. If you could please come forward. And I don't believe we have with us the third-place winner, which is the Freedom Middle School student, D'Angelo Thompson. He won third place, and each student won a Visa gift card, and his or her teacher also won money for their classroom. It was a great job, and keep on writing, girls.
Ms. Leonard, please continue with 4.02 Career and Tech Students that placed in a State Fair contest.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. This year, ten Spotsylvania Career and Technical Education Students placed at the Virginia State Fair in competitions related to their courses of study. This evening, we would like to recognize some of the students. This evening, we have Odell Oliver from Riverbend High School, who won first place in cake decorating. His culinary arts instruction is Chef Lee DiMario. We do have two other students that confirmed they were going to be here. I didn't see them come in, but I would like to see if they were able to come. We have Samuel Cannell from Cortland High School, and Joshua Haley from Spotsylvania High School. They won second place in heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. Their HVAC instructor is Tody Lan. Congratulations, Odell.
If we can continue with 4.03 Fine Arts Recognition, please.
Thank you. We are displaying artwork for the school board room, the foyer, and school board offices from six of our schools. This month, we are showing artwork from Erin Watson, Harrison Road Elementary; Casey Deal, Post Oak Middle School; Joshua Blum, Battlefield Middle School; Leann Houston, Chancellor High School; Delaina Chandler from Massaponics High School; and Jerry Mann from Riverbend High School. We celebrated these student artists previously with certificates of appreciation and a reception held in their honor prior to this meeting. The December Superintendent's Award for Outstanding Visual Art goes to Alex Matthews. Alex Matthews is a 10th grader at Chancellor High School. Alex's artwork will hang in Dr. Baker's office this month, and we would like to have Alex and his art teacher, Leann Houston, to come forward and be recognized for their outstanding accomplishments.
Okay, moving on to item 4.01 Homeland Hero Contest Winners. Ms. Leonard.
Thank you. Spotsylvania County Middle School Students had the opportunity to enter the Homeland Heroes Writing Contest sponsored by Berkshire Hathaway Home Services and J.G. Wentworth Home Lending. Students were asked to write an essay about a hero in their life or submit a letter written to a hero thanking him or her for their service. This evening, we would like to recognize the following students as the winners in this year's competition. In first place, from Battlefield Middle School, we have Brittany Connor, who won first place with her essay about her grandfather who served in the Vietnam War. If Brittany would come forward, please. With us this evening, from Freedom Middle School, we have Cara Hayden, who won second prize. If you could please come forward. And I don't believe we have with us the third-place winner, which is the Freedom Middle School student, D'Angelo Thompson. He won third place, and each student won a Visa gift card, and his or her teacher also won money for their classroom. It was a great job, and keep on writing, girls.
Ms. Leonard, please continue with 4.02 Career and Tech Students that placed in a State Fair contest.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. This year, ten Spotsylvania Career and Technical Education Students placed at the Virginia State Fair in competitions related to their courses of study. This evening, we would like to recognize some of the students. This evening, we have Odell Oliver from Riverbend High School, who won first place in cake decorating. His culinary arts instruction is Chef Lee DiMario. We do have two other students that confirm they were going to be here. I didn't see them come in, but I would like to see if they were able to come. We have Samuel Cannell from Cortland High School, and Joshua Haley from Spotsylvania High School. They won second place in heating, ventilation, and air conditioning. Their HVAC instructor is Tody Lan.
If we can continue with 4.03 Fine Arts Recognition, please.
Thank you. We are displaying artwork for the school board room, the foyer, and school board offices from six of our schools. This month, we are showing artwork from Erin Watson, Harrison Road Elementary; Casey Deal, Post Oak Middle School; Joshua Blum, Battlefield Middle School; Leann Houston, Chancellor High School; Delaina Chandler from Massaponics High School; and Jerry Mann from Riverbend High School. We celebrated these student artists previously with certificates of appreciation and a reception held in their honor prior to this meeting. The December Superintendent's Award for Outstanding Visual Art goes to Alex Matthews. Alex Matthews is a 10th grader at Chancellor High School. Alex's artwork will hang in Dr. Baker's office this month, and we would like to have Alex and his art teacher, Leann Houston, to come forward and be recognized for their outstanding accomplishments.
Moving on to public comments, item 5.01. Dr. Martin, could you please give instructions?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. At this time, Madam Chair, we do not have anyone that signed up.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Is there anyone in the audience who would care to speak to the board this evening? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close public comments and move on to item 5.02 Board Member Comments. And Ms. Grant, I'm going to give you the honor of beginning this evening.
I just want to thank Ray Laura for his service in these past years. He is not here to listen to us all say that, but we all had our opportunity to say goodbye to him, and I just wanted to thank him publicly. He was a wonderful mentor and friend, and we will definitely miss him. And in his honor, I would like to ask for the principals and vice principals to stand up for a round of applause for all your hard work and appreciate your service.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In following what Ms. Grant has said to for Mr. Laura's 12 years of service and recognition was given to him this past week, but we, one or two items of significant note are his importance and the role he played with having JROTC and the Commonwealth Governor's School, almost since the inception of both of those programs. I'd also like to say congratulations to the Cortland High Chambers Choir. What a way to begin with the Christmas spirit. And want to say also thank you for everyone, and please have a safe and merry Christmas.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Mr. Blaine.
First of all, I would like to second all the statements that have already been made, but in addition, I'd like to compliment Mr. Meyer and Mrs. Shelley for their reelection, and thank the citizens who re-elected me. I appreciate the opportunity to serve another four years and to focus keeping our children first and our highest priority. I'd like to compliment Mr. Twig as well for his reelection, and I know that we're all looking forward to working with him. I'd like to just take a special note about the choir. I think it's so great to see fine arts being praised and recognized because they play such an important role in our academic procedures. And of course, my very best wishes for a great Christmas season for our staff and the people in the public.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Mrs. Blaylock.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. And fear of being repetitive, I won't say everything again. However, I will comment on Mr. Laura. He cannot hear enough words from us. He's given 12 years of service to the community, and I want to make sure that he hears our thanks. And as Dr. Meyer said, there's many programs that he was there at this inception and advocated for and have made such a difference in many children's lives. So thank you, Mr. Laura, for your service. Happy holidays and merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mrs. Blaylock. Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to take this opportunity to thank all the coaches that participated in fall sports and the athletes that participated in fall sports. You ended the fall season in a spectacular fashion. All of our football teams made it to the playoffs. Some schools went very deep into the playoffs. Massaponics High School did an exceptional job getting to the regional finals, and Cortland High School getting to the state semifinals. That's a tremendous effort, not only by the athletes and the students, but the parents that supported them and this community that rallied behind them as they were engaged in an endeavor together. So I want to thank them, and I also want to thank our community for their continued support for our school division and the students that allow them to be the best that they can be. With that being said, Madam Chair, I turn over the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. And then I'm just going to continue about Mr. Laura and thank him for his 12 years of service with Spotsylvania. I've enjoyed my four years on the board with him. His community involvement, that's what he thrives on, is community involvement, and he truly, truly loves the students of Spotsylvania. He truly loves the staff of Spotsylvania, and I would be remiss if I did not say that he truly loves the Spotsylvania Knights. Mr. Laura, he will definitely be missed from us here on the board. We have four more days, four more school days before Christmas break, and I just want to wish everybody a very merry Christmas, happy holidays, and we'll see you next year. And that's all for my board member comments, and I'm going to move on to item 5.03. Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I know that we have several very special reports to come, so I'm not going to speak in any detail, but perhaps if the right moment arises, a comment is appropriate during those different reports or at the conclusion of those reports, I will add just a small bit to what has been shared already regarding Mr. Laura's profound contributions to the school board over a 12-year period. I think he served, at least in the time that I've been here, with great passion, great pride. He truly did love his adorable principals, and he spent a lot of time advocating for the work that was being done and is being done in the school division. And lastly, I think his empathy and his advocacy for educators was true, and we will miss him but know that he will remain in touch with us over the next few years. But his contributions will live on through the work of this board and the school division. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Okay, moving on to item 6.01 Spotsylvania County Public Schools Literacy Partnership Program Grant. Ms. Daniels.
Good evening, School Board Chair Michelle, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. The Office of Communications and Community Engagement is pleased to share a business partnership that has helped to create the SCPS Literacy Partnership Program. At this time, I would like to introduce Amber Balaico. She's our communication specialist and grant writer to share information about the program.
Good evening, School Board Chair Michelle, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Local business entrepreneur and Toyota dealership owner, Mr. Ron Rosner, has provided Spotsylvania County Public Schools with the initial startup grant in the amount of $100,000 for the SCPS Literacy Partnership Program. This program will enable Spotsylvania County Public Schools to purchase materials and provide teachers with the high-quality professional learning to create a supported environment of literacy in our elementary schools. SCPS will use the grant to purchase the Fontis and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System to seamlessly link assessment to instruction along the continuum of literacy learning. Fontis and Pennell Leveld Literacy Intervention, known as LLI, is a small-group supplementary literacy intervention designed for students who find reading and writing difficult. The goal of LLI is to bring students to grade-level achievement in reading. This initiative also includes take-home books, so we can engage parents as partners in the student's success. The initial funding that Mr. Rosner has provided will enable us to begin with two elementary schools, Brock Road Elementary and Wilderness Elementary. Moving forward, the Department of Communications and Community Engagement will be seeking additional business partners to help expand and sustain the literacy partnership program. Spotsylvania County Public Schools is appreciative of Mr. Rosner's generous support of our endeavor to prepare college and career-ready students. At this time, we would like Mr. Rosner to come forward to be recognized and to present the initial grant funding for our literacy partnership program.
I'm here speaking for the 375 associates that we work with in the Rosner Automotive Group. We are thrilled to be able to give this initial grant and know this will lead to a higher degree of literacy than we have now. We can move ahead and make these all productive students for the future. I'm accompanied by my wife, and she has a copy of the check, and we are honored to be here and honored to be part of Spotsylvania County. I started in business in Spotsylvania County in 1979, and it's a pleasure and an honor to be able to give back. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind yielding, some members would like to make some comments.
Mr. Rosner.
Ms. Blaylock.
Mr. Rosner, before you get away, we just want to thank you from the bottom of our heart as a school board member for our community partnering with our school division to help the children. It really means a lot to us, and this is going to go a long way. So thank you. So, thank you, thank you very much for your generous donation and the program that is going to do great things.
Hopefully this is a leadership grant that can get other businesses in our community to join in so we can go ahead and expand this beyond the two schools.
That's right, and you've set the standard. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 6.02, Status Update, Planning the Plan. Mr. Upperco?
Thank you. I was kind of hoping they'd keep the check up here. Madam Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, as you recall, Mosley Architects was selected by the division to develop and to conduct, excuse me, a comprehensive study that further aligns and coordinates the division's capital improvement plan and the strategic plans. The culmination of this study will provide planning recommendations for accommodating and maximizing current facility capabilities as well as provide for future student growth. We have with us this evening Doug Westmoreland, who is the Vice President of Mosley Architects, as well as Carl Chapin, and they will present a status update regarding Phase One of Planning the Planning Study. Thank you.
Good evening. It's certainly our pleasure to be here on this holiday school board meeting to give you this update. We're coming to the conclusion of the Phase One part of this project and we'll give you an update as to where we are today. Want to remind everyone that the goals to this whole endeavor were to conduct this study develops the comprehensive division-wide plan to accommodate and maximize current facility capacities as well as provide for the future student growth. As part of that whole plan, the Phase One, as you recall, is data gathering and that's what we've been heavily involved in and that's what we're going to bring to conclusion by January 4th. That consists of three basic pieces. One, the enrollment projections. That is a school-by-school, division-wide, grade-by-grade, how many kids are you going to have now five years, 10 years out, as well as looking at the history. The second part of that is your GIA database and that is in essence locating your students where they are in the county and geocoding them to what grade they're in, what schools they go to, and that will be an incredible tool as we go to Phase Two when we start to look at different options and where schools are. Dr. Carl Chapin is with me today. He and his partner Susan Kooch are KNC Associated and they are the enrollment projection and GIS gurus. So, they have been working diligently with us and with Don and your staff as well as the Spotsylvania County planning staff to look at these numbers and come up to the conclusions that we're going to present to you tonight in terms of enrollment projections. The third part of that was the school program capacity analysis and Carl and I have been tag teaming on that and we'll bring you an update on that as well. So, Carl, I'll turn it over to you for enrollment projections.
Thanks, Billy. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, it's good to see everybody. We have been hard at work for several months and we're pleased to say that the enrollment projections part of the study is done, but we'll point out that enrollment projections are an ongoing saga, kind of like predicting the weather. Things happen and regularly they have to be updated based on what the new trends were, what happened and what didn't happen. So, we have finished developing the enrollment projections. We have worked not only with county school staff, but also with county planning side, particularly looking at residential development and other kinds of economic development that may be taking place in the county. And so, we have done five- and 10-year projections for the division as a whole and by school, all of which has been provided to the school division. Like I said, it's an ongoing process. One of the things that we are doing is leaving you all with the capability to be able to update a few of the key indicators and I'm going to share those with you here so that whether you have an outside consultant or not, from within the school system itself, you all can continue to monitor what those critical trends are. And as I've said several times to folks, if you monitor these critical areas on a regular basis, then when things are going to change in a big way, you won't be blindsided. I can promise you that. With that said, what we have here is our summary of where we think you're going to be five years from now in 2020 and 10 years from now in 2025. And we've essentially provided you with a range in terms of projection that is based upon sort of a moderate projection, if you will, if things continue to stay as they have been over the past several years, very quiet and calm relatively speaking. And then we also have provided you with a higher-end projection that is based upon things picking up again, particularly with respect to residential development and folks, new folks moving in. And I would say as we stand here tonight that from what we've seen in the trends and what we'll share with you, we would advise paying attention to the higher end in terms of where we think, if, you know, if we had to pick and put a stake in the ground, the higher-end projection we think is five years from now and 10 years from now closer to where you're going to be. But we wanted to give you a sense of if things remain the same, what would happen with respect to your enrollment. So, that's the idea here. Just some general observations and these are sort of the building blocks that help drive where our forecast ended up for you all. First of all, from the point of view of babies being born to residents, to moms who are residents of Spotsylvania County. Obviously, five years later, those are the kids that start out in your school system as kindergartners. From 2002 to 2008, the average number of babies born to residents of Chesterfield, excuse me, that's where I live, Spotsylvania, 1,671. Those are the students who are now your second through eighth graders. From 2009 to 2013, 1,542 babies were born on average annually. So, that's down on average 129 for that period of time. Those are the children that are either just starting out in your lowest elementary grades or they have not yet hit your school system yet. Now, one, the most recent set of data, and this is where this kind of work gets really intriguing as far as forecasting this, is we now have one year in 2014 where the number of babies born jumped back up to 1,613. So, a higher number from 2002 to 2008, a smaller number of babies being born from 2009 to 2013, and now we have a year where, whoa, it's ticked back up again. And in our business, one year does not make a trend, but one year does raise an eyebrow. Now, the next key building block in doing a forecast like this is looking at from the time that a group of kids in a year was born in your county, by the time five years later they got to kindergarten, what happened to the size of the group? Back in 2006 through 2010, the size of that group entering kindergarten had grown by an average of 104 children or 7% from the time, the year they were born until the year they started kindergarten. From 2011 to 2015, the actual size of the group was smaller, only by five children or less than 1%, but it was smaller. So, in essence, there was no growth in the group in that five-year period. I want to come back to that toward the end to show you how significant that is, why that's so important to pay attention to. A next key, another key building block is from kindergarten to fifth grade. What happens to the size of the group? And again, the idea here is what's the dynamic going out in the larger county in terms of people moving in, people moving out, and how does that shake out? And over the past five years, that average growth from kindergarten to fifth grade has been about 5%. By the time that group of kids gets to fifth grade, there's 5% more kids in the group than there were when they entered kindergarten. Again, for the latest year, the current fifth grade, they, that group has grown by 7%. Now, nothing earth-shattering, but again, it's another eyebrow raiser here to say, hmm, you know, for this one year now, we have a one year, not a trend necessarily, but something to pay attention to during the next round when next fall comes along. Typically, from upper elementary through middle school and through high school, the size of the groups typically are very stable. There's not nearly as much dynamic growth going on as kids get older. Folks tend not to move as much. There tends to be much more stability. With that said, your growth from sixth grade to eighth grade was 3% on average and this current eighth grade grew by 4%. That's pretty typical. From ninth grade to 12th grade, and again, this is pretty typical as well, the size of the group declined on average by 13%. For the current 12th grade, that size of that group from ninth grade only declined by 11%. So, trending in the right direction. Whoops. Back. Thanks. Here's the detail of that first summary sheet that I showed you. Here's the detail by grade level, the history from 2006, and then by grade level, 2020, 2025, and then where we think you'll be total enrollment. And the next slide is the same numbers but broken down by elementary, middle, and high school. And then again, the same data just graphed for you to see what the trend has looked like and at all levels, how we see it, we anticipate it trending up over the next five to 10 years. The last piece I wanted to share with you with respect to enrollment projections, and this gets back to this idea of the size of the group when they, in the year they were born, how much it grew by the time they get to kindergarten and how much they grow by the time they get, move on through your school system. And what we've called this is the history of the 2015 senior class. So, what we did was we started with the current senior class and we worked all the way back to the year they were born, 1998. And in 1998, 1,194 kids were born who now form the core of your 2015 senior class. But look at what happened between 1998 and 2003. Five years later, when they hit kindergarten, you see the spike in the graph from under 1,200 kids to over 1,600 kids in that five-year period. And we only showed one cohort moving through here, but we looked at this, there was that period of time in there when things were quote booming in Spotsylvania, that that pattern of growth from birth to kindergarten, there was a multi-year thing going on there where those groups were shooting up on average 35% from the time the kids were born until the time the group got to kindergarten. That's huge. That's when, that's when things were truly busting loose. I show you that to illustrate, if you just look across that graph, you see that big jump from birth to kindergarten and then you see it continue to rise and it really continues to rise up through about the fourth grade. And then it starts to level off with the exception of ninth grade where there is typically a spike in ninth grade, but pretty consistent from upper elementary from then on until senior year, the size of the group. So, I hope I haven't bored you to death with the numbers here, but what we wanted to try to show you was these are the underlying factors that drove our forecast. And with respect to continuing to monitor this, if you continue to monitor that on an annual basis, how many, how many babies are born to mothers who reside here? From the time they were born, the year they were born to the year they got to kindergarten, what happened to the size of that group? And from the year they hit kindergarten to five years later when they, or sixth grade, five, six years later when they hit fifth grade, what happened to the size of that group? Pay attention to those three things. If things start busting loose again, if the dynamic is going to change in terms of population in Spotsylvania, student population, those are your early warning that it's happening. Those things will start to change and will give you, in essence, an advance warning, a long-range forecast that, hey, things are going to change, here's what we need to plan for differently. If you come around to that on an annual basis and look at then, what are the implications? You'll, you won't be blindsided, I guess is the best way to put it. Real quickly, another critical component that Doug mentioned of the planning that we have been doing or are going to continue to do is we have, we have taken your student data and we've put it in a geographic information system that allows us to, moving forward, be able to look at how many, how many kids by grade level live in a particular area, in a particular neighborhood, in a particular geographic area of the county by grade level, therefore, what's in the pipeline, what's coming down the road. And we've also overlaid this with your existing school boundaries to be able to say, so within, within X school's attendant zone, here's how many elementary kids there are, here's how many, here's how many middle school kids there are and so on. And we're able to on the fly manipulate that data to do all kinds of really neat work with respect to planning for your future. Real quickly, here's a, these are a couple of static slides. This is the county with the high school attendant zones and I know it looks a little crazy, but those, each of those dots represents students. And if you take the same idea and then we picture us zooming in with that, you can zoom in to a particular specific area of the county and take a look at, and we can then generate the data that says, you know, in that, what you're seeing there, there are this many kindergarten kids, this many first graders and so on. And that capability, we're able to use it in essence on the fly.
Before we go into this next piece, I'd like to mention one other thing. This map probably doesn't surprise anybody in terms of where the blobs of space is. What Carl didn't mention to you is we did meet and have shared a lot of information with Wanda Parish and they've been very, very helpful at county planning. And it wouldn't surprise you that where the biggest blobs are or where the residential development coming down the pike is really going to be focused. So, that's going to be the interesting thing as we begin to look forward as to what those generate. And that essentially is where you've got water and sewer in the county and that makes some sense. The third part of this is the program, school program capacity analysis and that's the third piece of the puzzle. So, we know how many students are coming and we're predicting to come. We know where those students are. Now, what can each school accommodate? And we've talked about this before, that school program capacity is not a static number. It's going to change as your programs change and certainly has over the years as you've added more programs, more pre-K, more special ed, and we're in the middle of that process now. We've had a meeting with every school principal and we've had follow-up visits to every school, going through those spaces and seeing those spaces, how they're used, talking about programs, and we've got all that charted. Now, as our, as we're analyzing that, we'll put it into graphic form and come up with a program capacity for K5, but also for pre-K programs being handled for each school. And obviously, if we start moving programs to schools, that changes the program capacity of those schools. So, it becomes a real interesting Rubik's Cube in this next process. So, that is a process and we intend to have that complete by the 4th of January. I want to give you some general observations of your schools and then maybe some elementary and secondary observations. These are, I wouldn't say anecdotal, but there are no numbers behind these things. These are just observations of trends that we see and we suspect the final report is going to bear out. Number one, the state of your school facilities is good. I got to tell you, we were welcomed in every school. Every principal came prepared. We had fabulous discussions about what-ifs and programs and Y4s and, you know, every school we went through, you have some age schools, you have some new schools, they're all in very, very good shape. I mean, they're clean, they're active, they're good learning environments, and that is across the board in all facilities that we visited. We'd also say your facilities are being used effectively and efficiently. We'd also say your facilities are being used effectively and efficiently. Now, I think all of you know that there's some areas in the county that have some underutilized schools, there's some, there's some areas in the counties that are, are getting very crowded. So, but people are using their space that they're given, and they're using it very effectively. Three, and this is a general trend, and it's going to happen at all levels, probably more so in the elementary than other levels, is that your classrooms, regular classrooms at one time, have now been absorbed by a wide and comprehensive array of services to your students, which affect the program capacities of the schools. And that includes your pre-K programs, that includes your, your special education programs. At the elementary level, we saw lots of incredible reading programs and storage needs for reading programs, particularly at your Title I schools, but at your other elementaries as well. Resource spaces are being provided in full-size classrooms. So there are some resources out there that probably could be provided in smaller spaces, but again, they use the facilities that they're given. We found many resource programs doubled up, which is not ideal, you know, to have two speech sessions going on in the same room is not ideal. So some of that was going on as well. You have been involved in a, a pretty aggressive program to provide security vestibules to all your schools. I think you're maybe halfway through that, but where it's been done, it's been implemented very well. We saw a few challenges out there as you move forward with, with some of your school layouts, but that is kind of job one, we believe, in terms of security in schools, in terms of what, what absolutely needs to be done. So we applaud you for that investment in your schools as well. And then, number six, and this will come out in the report in specifics per school, but we have identified opportunities in many of these facilities that, where space could be reapportioned or repurposed to actually gain instructional space and be used more effectively. I'll give you a couple of examples in a minute. So specifically in your elementary schools, certainly your pre-kindergarten and special education services have expanded and are, in a lot of your schools, and many of them are delivered in, in centers in certain schools. That is, students coming from out of that district to go to an autism program, or a pre-K program, or whatever program. So that's, that's an efficiency thing, and that makes some sense, but where those centers are located may be one of the things to look at. I mentioned the extensive reading programs. We noticed that technology is deployed in various ways. Again, that's not a, that's not a judgment, that's just a comment, in terms of some elementary schools still have computer labs, and some elementary schools are dispersing their computers in the classroom. And that does create differences in program capacity. In terms of your secondary schools, we found that some of your popular programs have outgrown their space. That's the example I give you is the strings program in middle school. I don't know what you're doing in a middle school strings program, but I believe every one of them are exploding, and that, that bodes well certainly for your later programs, but they're running out of space in terms of what they've been using. This is, um, we're going to find this in most of your high schools, that your older CTE spaces provide opportunities for repurposed space. Good example of that is a, a business lab that was built twenty-five years ago, was built for secretarial stations so that they could lay them out, and now they're dealing with computers. So those spaces actually have more space than they need to deliver that program. And then, the third piece of this, faculty planning spaces can be repurposed for better functionality and additional instructional space. We found that pretty consistent in the high schools, and that doesn't surprise us. The use of faculty workrooms where you had a cubicle for every teacher essentially is very seldom seen to be used like that was designed. It's not just in Spotsylvania, that's, that's wherever we see them. And so we may be able to look at those spaces and give you better functionality in terms of teacher planning spaces, but also gain other space for other things, including instructional. So, that's just kind of a thirty, thirty thousand foot view. We look forward to presenting the facts and figures of all that and more specifics on those, on those issues. So the next steps is to complete the school program capacity analysis, and that will specifically tie back to the GIS and identify those schools where current or projected enrollments are going to exceed your program capacity. And that's, that's when we get into the options phase. So we'd be, excuse me, just to remind you, the phase two piece of this, in terms of community engagement, would be to create a core committee of county residents to participate in a series of workshops, to take this data and, and look at what you have. I would say it's fair that, that as we embarked upon this, we were a little surprised the enrollment projections weren't higher than, than they are coming out. But I will also tell you, I think you're going to see your program capacities come down because of the special program. So you're going to see pressure on, on some, if not all, your facilities as we move forward. We envision a, a series of three different workshops, and the timing of that is to be determined, but certainly probably in the spring. And then ultimately, the phase through is to develop a ten-years facilities plan that, that really tracks where, where you want to go as a school board to accommodate your programs and accommodate your capacities.
Just one thing I'd like to add, just to reiterate what Doug said about our, the, our whole experiences, we've been working together and doing these kind of studies for a long, long time, and we have been so impressed with your folks that we've been working with across the board, but with your principals in particular. Without exception, these folks were quick to answer our question, were open with their responses. We didn't feel any sense of anybody holding back. We asked a question, we want to see something, it was, let's go, you want to see it, let's go. And I think in almost all cases, the principals walked the buildings with us. And, and as we were meeting with principals, they, they would stay and listen to what one another had to say. It was just, we were just up and down the road, coming up here and leaving from here, we just talked so many, on so many occasions about what an impressive, impressive group of folks that, that you all have, all the way up to and including the, the central office and the, and the superintendent as well, we wouldn't want to leave them out, of course. But your principals are, as a group, as impressive a group as we've ever been associated with. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your presentation, and we have, Mrs. Blaylock has a question.
Thank you for your presentation, and with all due respect, you are preaching to the choir. We know exactly how wonderful our principals are, and we don't just say that, they, they really, they really are, are the real deal. There's no joke, and, and I agree with you, it goes up to central office from our superintendent and his cabinet as well. My question is though, is, I see a lot of statistics, which I expected, a lot of things you, to be honest with you, I expected a lot of things you said, but what I didn't hear, and maybe it's a premature time for me to ask this, is there any information on our feeder schools? Did you find accuracy in our feeders? Do we have any discrepancies there? Did you see that we are not doing as good of a job in kind of how we send our middle school to high school, if you will?
That, that really is part of, I think, phase two. It'll, it'll, our analysis of your existing will come out as we complete this first phase. But in terms of how you deal with that is really a part of phase two. I can tell you, oh, we, we have gotten the feeder pattern, just the description, and it's a mess.
That, that's something I would-
It's, it's crazy.
Yeah, I agree, and that's something-
And that's just, that's the words on the paper right now. There, there's a lot of reasons it's like that, but it just, it's not a linear process. And, you know, you got an elementary school that may be going to three different middle schools and four different high schools. That's unusual.
Yeah. And that's something that I really was excited about having you all onboard to really take that part of it on, and, and really assess and share with us as a school board exactly more efficient ways, very precise. I know that comes in the later, I'm not asking for that this evening. And, and also to take a bigger picture from where it starts at the elementary and feeds, and feeds, because a lot of times, and I know in my district, I talk a lot to parents that they can't understand why, you know, a neighborhood, they go to this middle school once elementary's over, they go to this middle school. And, and that is just something that I want us to be as efficient as we can. We'll never please everyone, but at the same time, the efficiency of that in this community is something that I'm glad we're looking at. And I'm not saying we're not efficient, it's just something that's been in place for so many years, and it, it may be time to take a look at how we do that.
One of the challenges in, in addressing this very issue is that there are two things you can't change. One is the size of your schools, each school.
Right.
And you have a, a great variety of schools. And the second is where people live and how the neighborhoods get defined. And so, when you're looking at feeder patterns, those are two critical variables that are locked in. And so you, you know, the size of the elementary's feed into the middle, the size of the middle's feed into the high school, helps create that, that spider-looking pattern. And there's, there's, having done a number of these, there's probably some level of efficiency that you can achieve, and, and we can look at and give you some suggestions on, but as long as you can't change those things, there's only a certain amount of it you can clean up.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
And I think this next phase will, will validate whether your feeder pattern is efficient or not. I say, I say it's a mess, I'm just looking at the sheet, it just looks like a mess.
Yeah.
But it may in fact be very efficient.
Yeah.
Until you lay it out on the, on the map and see the rationale behind it.
And that'll come in phase two?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, really at the end of this phase, so really between these two phases. In terms of identifying what you have now, in terms of solving the issue, that's really a phase two.
Okay.
The other thing Carl mentioned was adding on to schools, as you're probably aware, almost all of your elementary schools, if not all of them, have been added on to. And part of our phase one conclusions will be, does it make sense to add anything more to these elementary schools, or, or middle or high? Our gut reaction at this point is, we don't see a lot of opportunity for expansion. I think you've already taken your opportunity for expansion.
You know, it's funny you say that, because my next, that's a perfect segue to my next question was, did you look at, is it more efficient for us to build wings onto some of these schools, or is it more efficient to do something else? Because I remember, I've been on the board a long time, and we had a plan to add a wing that when the recession hit, it, it came off the table to one of our middle schools in, in my district, Thornburg. And we pulled that off the table. So when you're looking at this, are you looking at the land we own, and is, is a wing a more efficient way to go, or is it?
Yeah. And I'm very familiar, we, we did the Thornburg in the Nile River, and those, those are additions that may make a lot of sense, because they're not, they're not very big, and they're not really affecting the core of the building. But if you look at the elementary schools where, you know, you've had the multipurpose additions, but also almost all of them had classrooms added to them.
Elementary, yeah.
And so the cores are, are getting very much stressed.
And the ones I remember we were going to add on to aren't the ones that are at capacity.
Right.
So you, you end up with that, the ones that seem like they would be efficient due to land and, and space and just aren't at capacity.
And a good example is, the GIS map and the enrollment projections are going to show this district here that needs something, and that happens to be the school that's fully built out and is something you're going to be able to do to add to that. So, so there's the flag of saying, you know, you got to build a new school, you got to redistrict, you got to move the kids.
Yeah. And my district's one of those with the houses. We're, we're very, you know, we have a lot of schools that are, are at their capacity, are getting there quickly, and so this study is, is very much on the minds of the community that I represent. So, well, I appreciate the presentation, I'm sure there'll be a lot more questions as we keep going, and I look forward to the next phase. One thing that's hugely important to me, I want to point out you're already doing, is involve the community in this next phase. That's huge to me, they need an opportunity to voice their opinion, and I was very glad to see that you all are going to give them that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. I, I didn't get your name again with the yellow tie.
I'm not going to sing tonight, but I wore my Christmas.
Okay, okay.
Carl Chafin.
Carl, okay.
Yeah, Carl.
The question I had is, you, you showed us the facts in terms of the numbers based off of birth rates, et cetera. What other assumptions did you apply to your formula to determine whether we were going to have an increase or decrease, and, you know, in terms of maybe subdivisions being built, transfers into the area based off of sprawl, let's say, coming from Northern Virginia, things like that? Can you elaborate a little bit more on the assumptions that you made as you projected the numbers?
Yes, sir. We took a, a long, hard, in-depth look at the data that, that the county provided, that Wanda provided, with respect to residential development by school attendance zone, all the way down to individual elementary school attendance zones, and looked at it from the point of view of what's the potential in every school attendance zone, and then looked at it therefore from a larger geographic area. We also looked at what the, what the recent history on building permits has been, and we, in essence, what we did was we, we took all the, the hard data stuff that, that I shared with you, the examples of earlier, we took a look at what the, what the potential is for residential development, and then we, we just, we forecast it based on the idea that at least the, the early indicators are that things are going to pick up, but they're not going to bust open, they're not going to boom. And if we do that, and then take a look at what schools in particular will that hit and how quickly, and what we tried to do is just factor that in as a, you know, as a, I guess, an educated guess, with the idea being that we're probably right now on the front end of that starting to happen, and all the more reason to pay attention to, if that starts to happen with respect to your residential development, those factors that I pointed out earlier will start to change, and they'll change before your very eyes. And you'll start seeing those groups of kids get larger, because more people are moving in. And, and if a year, or two, or three, you know, if one year turns into two years, turns into three years with respect to a trend, with those kids that haven't even gotten to your school system yet, that's going to give you a, you know, a good signal that, you know, here's what we're in for. So what we've tried to do is, you know, an enrollment projection is just another type of research study. And, and you have to take the data that's relevant and, and get to know it, and then interpret it. And, and that interpretive piece becomes part hard data quantitative and part qualitative and experience-based. And so, we have, we have done our best to do all of that with respect to this, this research study, if you will. And the forecast that we're providing you is basically, ultimately becomes our best judgment as to where you're going to be five years from now and ten years from now.
Carl, thank you for that. And the other question I had, in terms of the assumptions that, that you made to forecast the numbers, because you obviously gave a high side and a, and a moderate side, as the slide indicated. What assumption would you consider sort of like the Joker, if you will, the, the one that if something, it could, it could go either way, could this particular assumption that you made could really have a, a significant impact on whether we're on the high side or the low side in the future?
I'd go, I'd go back to the assumptions we make about what is going to continue to happen with the number of babies being born in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. And we made the assumption that that's going to continue, that in essence, this one-year trend is going to become the trend to get to that higher end. And that the growth in the size of the group from kindergarten, from birth to kindergarten is going to start to tick up and continue to tick up. And either one of those could happen, may not happen, but our judgment is that we think that's what's, what's going to happen, is it's going to tick up.
The other part of that, that is difficult to predict is the housing development. There are a tremendous amount of approved housing developments, townhouse developments, apartment developments. Some of them are fifty-five and over, which are probably going to, not going to generate any or certainly a smaller number of kids. And so, how, how fast do they come online? Do they come online? How many kids do they generate? Those are all questions that you've got to make some kind of guesses and some analysis of. And, and working with, with the planning, we, we have some dates saying, well, we think this is going to be a ten-year build-out, we think this is going to be a twelve-year build-out. If that accelerates, that's one of those things that, that might bring more kids in. If we hit another recession and they, they just go in on the shelf, then that may go the other direction. That's kind of what happened before.
So, so, so basically, birth rates as one of your variables, and the other variable is construct, I mean, construction of, of buildings and homes in the area?
And their, their county's doing a really good job of tracking building permit data. And an interesting thing is that at least up through the latter part of this year, year to date, they were down this year from last year. So, we've got this, this dynamic going on where things are being approved, and we've got the, the beginnings of what looks like a change in trend, but we don't have anything right now- don't have anything right now that says it's gonna blow up. Okay. Um, and I'll, I'll give you a quick example of, of what a, what a crapshoot the residential development piece is to try to build in. Um, I had Don's job, and back in 19, early 90s, late 80s, in Chesterfield, I slipped up earlier and said Chesterfield. Um, there was a huge development zone, uh, named Magnolia Green in 1991 in western Chesterfield County that was gonna generate thousands of kids and drive the need for multiple schools. Um, here we are, 2015, and that is only just now beginning, beginning to happen. That's how difficult it is with the crystal ball to anticipate that. But you're tracking building permits, you know, if you track, if you track the, the demographic data on the other side, you will start to get that early signal that, hey, it's changed. But as far as our assumptions go, we, we, we built those factors into the ultimate forecast that we've given you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Dr. My, Dr. Meyer?
I think one of the other critical pieces is for, for this board is going to be how we maintain the data. Because you folks are putting an enormous amount of effort into build a database, and it's only gonna be as good as it can be maintained, because come next September, we're gonna need to redo it, hopefully at a lot better ease of, you know, preparing that database and garbage in, garbage out. So we get good numbers in, we get good numbers coming out, and reliability will be. I think what Mr. Brasswell was pointing out, you know, that critical number that I did see when we were at, you know, like you, the example you gave, 36% change from live birth to K. And as growth hits it, that number, you know, 35% is significant. You know, we've been through that, where we were building one or two schools a year, a thousand students per year. You know, I hope we don't run into that.
Yeah.
But the reason we're here tonight, and we're hearing from you folks and using your expertise, so that we can get a handle on and be prepared and know where we're going and how we're gonna get there. And we're being prepared for it. Well, we can only be as prepared as the accuracy of the numbers that we're gonna use to build in. So my question to you is, how difficult is it going to be for us now to be able to, once you complete your task, becomes our task?
If we do our job, it won't be difficult, particularly from the point of view of, of tracking those critical factors that gives you the early warning about what the enrollment's gonna be going on. If we do a good job, um, we're, we're planners, but we're also teachers. And so if we, if we do a good job of transferring our knowledge and our data to your all those folks who are perfectly capable, uh, it won't be difficult to continue that. The, and, and even with respect to the GIS database and those kinds of tools as well. Um, it's, if it's, the, the challenge typically is freeing up someone to be able to pay attention to it.
One follow-up, one follow-up question. One was the numbers dealing with the, uh, ADM and as we saw the live birth and those numbers. Second piece is the GIS mapping. Uh, how transferable or how, what's the ease in transferring the data that's with our student information system to the GIS coding?
Ultimately, those are all spreadsheets. The, the layered data that, that we use to drive GIS, they're all Excel spreadsheets. Um, and so there's, there's, there's some magic to doing it, and my partner Susan is a, is a magician when it comes to it. But in terms of maintaining those data, that data, and in terms of using it moving forward, you know, if you, if you can handle Excel spreadsheets, you can handle it. It's that, it's that either simple or complex, depending on how, how fluent you are with that.
I think Mr. Uppercow will have to answer that question.
Okay. I'm gonna get the answers.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Blaine?
Uh, just briefly, I'd like to thank you for a very lucid presentation, easily understood. And especially thank you for the recommendation that you made about getting some committees going in the community. Cause if we do that, it's been pointed out, it enables us to keep the community with us and give us guidance, because the outcome so often is, when you've got more students and you're not building, there gotta be some line border, boundary changes and so on. And if they understand and work with us, and we, vice versa, uh, we'll, we'll be able to interpret and, uh, apply, I think, a, a much better result.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Mrs. Blaylock has a follow-up.
Follow-up. You can tell I'm in the district where I feel like all the building's going on. And that's my question. When you were tracking the building permits, I realize we looked at the map and we don't have to be told that Spotsylvania County, we saturate and all live sort of in one area, and it's a very sprawling community where there's not a lot of activity with homes. Did you find that there is one area that feeds to the same schools that is getting the most building permits approved, or did you go that in-depth in your research?
I'd say we're not there yet, but one of the things we're gonna do with the GIS mapping is to map these potential developments into the existing boundaries.
That would be helpful. I, I feel like they're all in mine. I'm sure you're gonna find something different, but I would like, that would be so helpful.
I, I don't think we looked at it specifically, but I can't imagine that, that the tracking that the county is doing with respect to building permits isn't, can't be tracked back to
Right.
School attendance zone.
Sure can.
But I, but I, we haven't seen it, so I don't, I don't want to misspeak, but that's pretty, that's a pretty typical way of, of capturing that data.
That would just be very useful, I think, uh, for the school board members to see where the building permits are being approved according to our districts. Thank you.
Thank you. And then I just have one for, I guess, another, an upcoming report, what you said, the school utilization. Now, my question is, when we get that, would it be, say, a school that was built at a capacity for a capacity of 800 students, possibly restructuring it, just moving programs around? It could be 820, or because maybe there's some, it's got a high incidence of, um, smaller, like, say preschool or special education, then they might say, well, this is only now at 750 capacity? Is that the type of thing we're gonna be seeing?
Absolutely. And it's, there's gonna be a summary spreadsheet, but there's gonna be lots of spreadsheets behind it, because they're gonna be the what-ifs. What if pre-K goes somewhere else, then that capacity can become this. And that's the game we'll play when we see schools that, that are getting lots of growth, to say, hey, there's a pre-K program, we, we may need to move to another school, which will allow us capacity in that school. That's, that's the kind of options look that we do with that.
Thank you very much. Any more come? Dr. Baker?
I just wanted for the board to, to also thank, uh, Carl and Doug for the, uh, the work that they've done, and it, it's been not just gathering numbers, they, they have been very interactive, and, uh, probably have heard a, a variety of perspectives on the themes that we've talked about today. But I, I just wanted to remind the board that as we move forward, um, and I appreciate the, um, the reference to the, the community engagement piece, I think that's, uh, obviously we're looking at some workshops, but I think that the community engagement piece will be ongoing, uh, before and beyond, uh, those workshops. Um, we've entitled this planning the plan, and I, I do think that we're gaining clarity. Sometimes we're gaining clarity that we won't have clarity in certain areas, but that we at least have some, uh, a good foundation, uh, and will continue to get clarity on that foundation as we move forward. But, uh, remind the board that we want to, um, we want to build our vision for the future of this school division over the next 10 years, and it's, it's important that we have as much information as possible before we forge ahead in any one direction. And, um, I know that sometimes those, those delays, uh, feel like denials, and sometimes they feel like, uh, that we'll never be able to move forward in certain areas. But I think the other side of that is moving forward with some really important large-scale projects, and then finding that we have to turn on a dime, or that we have to make adjustments. So I'm very grateful for the, the time that's being put into this study and the continued partnership a, as we move forward. And I thank the board for, uh, some, some very astute questioning, and ask you to continue to look over the information. Mr. Uppercow will be providing you with all of the detailed reports that we are getting, including the final space, uh, capacity analysis. And I think we believe that that would be ready right as we come back from break.
Certainly the first draft, that is probably something we want in draft form, to get some feedback from you, and then
Okay.
Go from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 6.03, middle school athletics, Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. In response to a request from the board, this evening we will provide a report on the current status of middle school athletics. I would like to invite Mr. Lane Byrd, Principal of Spotsylvania Middle School, and Mr. Brian Treacle, Athletic Director of Nye River Middle School, to share with you this information, and would welcome any feedback or questions from the board at the conclusion. Okay?
Good evening to the board members, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. As Mr. Wolf said, I am Lane Byrd, the proud Principal of Spotsylvania Middle School. Go Bulldogs! Uh, my presentation partner this evening is Brian Treacle. He is a physical education teacher and the Athletic Director at Nye River Middle School. Together, we make up the middle school representation on the secondary athletic task force, uh, and we are happy to come before you with an update, uh, on the middle school programs. Much of this information, uh, many of you may already be familiar with, but hopefully we will, uh, enlighten you in some respect with respect to middle school program, middle school athletic programs, and put everybody on the same page, as well as provide you with an update on a specific topic of interest and conversation of late among our other athletic task force members that are also in attendance this evening. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Treacle, and he will, uh, talk about the middle school sports seasons.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I'm gonna start off, I just wanna go over our sports that we offer and go over our regular season and postseason format. Um, for our fall season, we typically start our fall seasons the first day of school. Um, we have girls' basketball, girls' soccer, and also our football seasons. Um, winter season, we break that up into two sessions. Our first session is our boys' basketball and wrestling seasons. That usually begins mid-November. Um, that'll conclude towards the end of January, and that's when we'll jump into our second session, which is our girls' volleyball season, which begins usually early February. Again, that'll kind of depend on the calendar and when everything gets started for the year. Our spring season, that begins early April, and that's our boys' soccer season, girls' softball, as well as our track and field season. We have daily practices throughout, throughout the regular season. Monday through Thursday are our typical practices. Um, occasionally, we will have a Friday practice in there if the coach requests it, um, but typically we go Monday through Thursday. Um, we have eight regular season contests in all of our sports, with the exception of football and track and field, which we offer six. We have fifth quarter play for football, soccer, volleyball, and wrestling. And what the fifth quarter is, it's basically an extra quarter of play that does not count towards the score of our game, but it allows some of our athletes that aren't quite ready yet, or may not get as much playing time in the regular game, to get almost a full quarter of play in as far as development. We find this really helps our seventh graders who get a full quarter in almost every game to advance through. We don't have it for all of our sports yet, um, basically because of officials' contracts and things like that. These are the sports that we offer for as of right now. Um, our games begin at four o'clock, um, with the exception of track and field, which we try to get started a little bit earlier because of the length of a track and field meet. Um, if you've ever been to a track and field meet, it does take a while to get through, and we try to have all of our events done by 5:30. Um, our postseason format right now, we have the top four teams, and each of our sports advance to our postseason tournament. Um, those seedings are based on the regular season standings. Um, we seed them one through four, with our number-one team hosting the number-four seed, our number-two seed hosting the number-three seed, and a semifinal matchup. The two winners will play in a championship game, and those games are played at the higher seeds. Whoever earns that higher seed, their school will host those particular games. Um, it's a little different for our track and field and wrestling programs. Those are individual events, individual sports that produce a team score. So each team, and for our track and field championship, each team is permitted three entries into each of the running events, two entries into our field events, and one entry into the relays. There's two relays at our meets, so each school gets to enter one relay. For our wrestling tournament, we have a two, we break that up over a two-day period. We have a quarterfinals, which is usually held on a Tuesday for all of our weight classes. The winners of those will advance to our Thursday semifinals and our championships. And I'll turn it over back to Mr. Byrd here, who's gonna talk a little bit about eligibility and staffing.
With respect to the eligibility for middle school athletics, um, as middle schools, obviously, we are not official members of the VHSL, Virginia High School League, but we generally follow Virginia High School guidelines unless otherwise noted in our middle school athletic handbook. Uh, some general eligibility considerations, students must be enrolled in Spotsylvania County Middle School, they must be in a seventh or eighth grade, and it must have been promoted from the preceding grade. We all share at the middle school level, among all the administrators and athletic directors, um, a, a commitment to the concept of student-athlete, hopefully like all of our, uh, programs in Spotsylvania County. Um, but our academic requirements, um, that you can read about in the slides, are, uh, even more stringent than those of the Virginia High School League, and that is intentionally so, um, so that our students understand the privilege of wearing the uniform and representing our middle schools. They must take care of that student part first to prepare them, um, moving ahead. And so you can read through, um, the academic requirements that our athletic directors monitor each season, um, to make sure that the students are taking care of their grades first. Also, you'll notice in the last bullet there, that students must submit proper documentation in line with county policy as far as physical exam, insurance information, and especially of late, the concussion education training program that has been implemented in Spotsylvania County. That is required of the student and the parent before any participation, including tryouts, um, at the middle school level. As far as staffing, our middle school athletics programs are overseen directly by athletic directors like Mr. Treacle, who are all full-time teachers in our building. Um, and you can see, um, the stipend that they receive annually of $2,310. Each team, each of the 10 teams is staffed with one-page coach who receives a stipend of, uh, $1,386 for the season. The majority of middle school coaches, but I would emphasize, not all middle school coaches are school staff members. Um, it, it is worth noting that every middle school football team has one additional paid coach, um, but all nine of the other sports have one paid coach position. Our teachers do take an active role throughout the year. Um, in middle school athletics, it is part of duty assignments that we ask of them, and some of those roles include, uh, taking tickets, um, supervising student spectators. We encourage lots of participation, obviously, by our student body, who can stay after school to support their classmates, um, as well as officials. However, the officials are only used for track and field as volunteers. For all the other sports, um, we contract with referees associations, and that typically is one of the higher expenses for our program, which leads directly into the next, uh, part of the presentation, which is on costs and revenues. Mr. Treacle?
Just as Mr. Byrd just said, all of our sports, we, we do hire officials for, with the exception of track and field. Um, that is one of our highest costs on the season. We also have major costs of uniforms and equipment. We do try to update the uniforms regularly, um, as well as provide equipment to each of our coaches and teams that they need, recondition of football helmets, things like that to go into that category. Transportation costs for our travel to away games, each season we provide, have at least four trips per team. That can be higher if they get into the postseason and have, require additional buses in the postseason. We also have additional costs for those tournament games as far as having various workers, deputy fees, trainer costs, and some of the supplies needed to run off those tournaments. Um, our revenues for, for this year, we receive our, an athletic budget of $3,500. Um, we also have our admission revenue. We charge $3 for all of our, um, events, and it's also to note there, the children 10 and under, um, senior citizens 60 and over, and Spotsylvania County Public Schools staff, plus a guest, will get in for free to all of our contests. Um, each, or at least most of our schools do at least one athletic fundraiser a year to help kind of offset those costs. Those can range from dances to spirit nights. Everybody does something a little bit different, but usually, most of our schools has, have a minimum of one to try to help offset some of those costs. And I'll turn over the next piece to Mr. Byrd.
One additional update that we wanted to share with the board from the Athletic Task Force is conversation recently about sixth-grade participation and the possibility of sixth graders participating moving forward. Um, this is a discussion that we have had for a while, and we simply wanted to point out some of the pros and cons that are discussed among the task some of the pros and cons that are discussed among the task force, as well as among the principals and athletic directors and others beyond those direct members of the Athletic Task Force. As far as the pros, the pros typically fall in the obvious idea that sixth-graders, by being involved, would have more opportunities, especially as athletics is their thing. Many of our sixth-graders come involved in one or two things that they really want to delve into, and for some of them, there's a faction of our students whose athletics is indeed their thing, obviously, in the growing era of travel sports. We see a lot of our sixth-graders come who are already, and already participating and have participated for several years. It would give them a greater sense of belonging. We frequently, I, as the principal of Spotsylvania Middle School, get that question at the beginning of every year, why are sixth-graders not allowed to participate? Typically, the answer to that question is really to allow for the transition, which for some of our students can be difficult, from elementary to middle, as well as from middle to high, and you can sort of judge the reality of that in and of itself. Some of our students come really ready to dive right in, and others do take their time in getting acclimated. But certainly, involvement would give them a greater sense of belonging, contribution if they are really involved in athletics. It also would allow potentially for more time for the development of athletes who might participate, could participate, in the sixth grade, the seventh grade, and the eighth grade year, although year to year, there's no guarantee. Our teams start from scratch each and every year. On the cons or concerns side, basically, you'll see most of the conversation fall into one of four categories. Bullet one there speaks to the evaluation concerns during tryouts. And again, I go back to highlight that we have one paid coach per sport, and coaching positions, as they are, can be difficult to fill, especially in certain sports, especially wrestling. Wrestling is a very difficult one to find qualified coaches at the middle school level. But you'll see an example there. In the classroom academically, we expect the average PE, or we see in Spotsylvania County, the average PE teacher responsible for about 32 students. In some of our sports for tryouts currently, with seventh and eighth graders only trying out, you can, I won't say it's the common, it is the most common number, but we will see up to 70, 75-plus students trying out, and we typically take three days to try to fairly and appropriately evaluate those students and decide who will be members of the team for the season. You'll also see the mention of emotional and social impacts of those who try out and do not make the team. That's not only a concern for sixth-graders, that's a concern for our seventh and our eighth graders, and it's a developmental piece that we have to deal with regardless of what level we're trying out. We don't want kids to be upset, we want to encourage participation. The philosophy at middle school is about participation and development. It really is. As much as we want it to be competitive, we want to develop the whole individual and use athletics as a tool to do so, and so we want to be mindful of that impact, especially on sixth-graders at their developmental stage. You'll see a note there that we are currently researching this, because this is anecdotal information that we discuss at the table, but currently, the middle school athletic directors and coaches, as well as the high school athletic directors, are collecting information about the number of students who try out as seventh-graders, do not make a middle school team, and then choose not to try out as eighth-graders, because the majority of the makeup of our teams is eighth-graders currently, and that, I think, would make sense to most folks. But obviously, that would have an impact with sixth-graders, and our high school A.D.s are looking into how many of our high school students do not pursue athletics after their middle school career for various reasons, because we do see participation numbers drop off drastically once we get into the ninth and 10th grade at the high school level in those tryouts. There's also grave safety concerns for all of our students, but for sixth-graders who might make the team, and you can see the physical differences. If you've been in a middle school, and I know many of you have, your own children, you know the physical difference between a sixth grader and an eighth grader, and sometimes it may be small, but in most cases, there's a big physical difference between an average sixth grader and an average eighth grader, and the conversation usually frequently turns to football in that discussion, and it is pointed out that we do not have any trainers at the middle school level. That is a concern for myself, as a former coach, as a principal of 800 students, the lack of trainers with all that is happening in the world today, and especially, again, concussions being at the forefront of the concerns, is a reality that we're dealing with and a discussion that we have with the task force as well. And then finally, you'll see references to maturity levels, both academically and athletically of sixth-graders who would be talented enough to be placed on the middle school teams. As a typical practice, even academically, we make an intentional effort across the board to separate as much as possible our sixth-graders as they acclimate to their new environment academically, and so that would be important athletically as well, and we integrate them, of course, gradually, as is developmentally appropriate, and so that's a concern that is expressed as well. Before we move to the opportunity for questions, we would be remiss if we didn't recognize the other members of our Athletic Task Force for Spotsylvania County that are here this evening. Mr. Wolf is the de facto leader of all our meetings, but we are fortunate to have representation from Cortland High School, the principal, Cliff Conway, and Ronnie Lohman are here this evening, and Dr. Joe Pizzani from Massaponix High School, as well as his Athletic Director, Stan Clements, are back there as well. They serve on the Secondary Athletic Task Force, and again, we enjoy very much being able to represent the middle schools on this task force. So at this time, we'll be happy to field any questions, and if you have any for our high school colleagues, I'm sure they'll be happy to come to the mic and answer them for you as well.
Thank you. Wonderful presentation, but Mr. Braswell has already tapped me. Mr. Braswell.
Thank you for your presentation. I have several questions, so please bear with me. First question is, we never, in the discussion, discussed the differences between Spotsylvania County and Stafford County, or Prince William County, or any other counties that do include sixth-grade participation and will impact, they are experiencing as a result of allowing sixth-graders to participate. I mention that because my very own son was caught from a sixth-grade football team in Prince William County when we lived there at the time, and it didn't prevent him from playing seventh-grade football, or eighth-grade football, or playing high school football. So I'd just like to know, first of all, why the other counties weren't considered in your study?
Sure. That's a good question, Mr. Braswell. The purpose of tonight's presentation was to give a foundational, sort of, just to give you the foundation of what takes place in middle school athletics, and to solicit questions and feedback from the board to go ahead and figure out the exploration of where we're going in the inclusion, or the possible inclusion, of sixth-grade students. That's why there's a current study that's going to be taking, well, there's a current study that's taking place in regards to a survey that's going out for the middle schools and the high schools, conducted that Mr. Byrd spoke about, in regards to the number of students who went out for a sport, didn't make a sport, and did they go and participate or go out for a sport in high school? Because what I hear from the high school athletic directors is that the number of students, for example, that Mr. Byrd mentioned earlier, about 70, 70-plus students who are going out and trying out in seventh grade alone, they're not seeing those types of numbers for, say, volleyball. They're seeing very much reduced numbers, and in some cases, can't field a team because of the numbers of individuals who have not come out for a sport. So that's what we're exploring at this point, not just the, it would be very simple to say, well, let's just include sixth-grade students. But what we're trying to do is dig a little bit deeper, is what's the impact of a student who has not made the team for future, for in the future, in regards to seven or eight? And for example, I appreciate the fact that your child had that opportunity and went out. Personally, my child had an opportunity and did not further the career. So I think what we need to try and figure out is that, do we have more students who are in the same boat, and why? So the purpose tonight is just to gather feedback from our communities, to see their interest as well. We ask and encourage them to reach out to their athletic director and to their principals, and also to get feedback from the board in regards to next steps. I do believe a logical next step is to talk to those other surrounding communities, to see what they did when they incorporated sixth grade into their sports, if that was initial, it was six, seven, and eight at the middle school level, or whether or not we needed to explore different avenues. So tonight is a very foundational meeting for next steps and to gather feedback from you all.
And those counties have been doing it for quite some time. So I'm sure they have empirical data to back up their position that sixth-grade students are eligible, or they're not, to the detriment of sixth-grade students, to be able to participate in sport. So that's just one piece. Now, the other part is, is when we talk about what is going to create a situation where children are not going to want to participate in sport because maybe they got cut, what about the impact of other variables, namely, activity fees? What impact does that have on the ability of people to want to participate in middle school athletics and continue if they may have been cut? I mean, there could be other factors besides just being cut.
Oh, sure. I don't disagree that there's a factor, but all of our schools, our middle and high schools, have opportunities to reach out to those parents who may qualify for either on free or reduced lunch for their child to work out, the opportunity for those child to participate, but for other parents who may be having trouble making ends meet to go ahead and have their child participate, they can meet with the principal and go on a payment plan to go ahead and do something like that. So there are opportunities based off of discussion. So the important part to convey there is that if it's a money issue, to please, 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 I implore them, to go ahead and reach out to the school, to have those conversations with the principals or the athletic directors, because we're sure something can be done.
Yeah, and my final question is, you know, when we talk about maturity rates with young people, obviously, football, you're probably pretty spot-on. Very few sixth-graders are going to have an opportunity to make the football team because of the maturity rate. But that's not necessarily the same for young women that are participating in athletics. A lot of them have already went through that form of puberty and are at the ability to be able to compete at a very high level against their peers that are seventh and eighth graders, and we are thereby discriminating, I guess, discriminating against their ability to participate in athletics because we're using the football model as opposed to a model that would apply to female sports.
Oh, sure. I think when you're looking at sports and athletic programs across the board, but you can even look at academic programs across the board, children at the middle school level mature at very different rates. In one day, they're at one level, and the next day, they're at another level. So, but there's no disputing the fact that children, girls, mature maybe faster than young men do, but again, that's a very personal thing, that individuals mature at different levels. And also, you'll find that in some situations, at least through my experience being a middle school principal, is that you will find some young men who have been cut from a sport that handle it pretty well, where young ladies may not, or you have vice versa. So it really goes a couple of different ways, is that, that's a very personal thing when someone is not, does not make a group-related activity, when it seems as though they are excluded. So the purpose of tonight, again, to provide very foundational approach, but at the same time, to allow these individuals the opportunity to explore much more on a deeper level in regards to, if you have not made a team before, did that affect you in the future of ever going out for a sport again? I know that some divisions north of us do not allow sixth-graders to play football because of the effects that footballs could be detrimental, plus of the concussions that we had mentioned here as part of the PowerPoint. But I think through the exploratory, again, it was to solicit feedback from the board tonight.
Thank you. I'm going to, okay. Ms. Graham, you had something?
Have we done a poll to see if there's even a tremendous amount of interest in sixth-graders playing sports in middle school?
I would say anecdotally, it hasn't been explored, at least during my tenure during this position.
Okay. And then, during the presentation, it said that the cost to us, if we opened it to sixth-graders, would just be the additional supervision during tryouts, because we anticipated large numbers in tryouts. So that would be the only cost of expanding this program?
You have the potential for a coaching aspect, and you do have, right now, tryouts take three days, so probably extending what that looks like into the different seasons. So I would say that it's not just a money aspect of what this potentially could be, but a competing time aspect as well in regards to the length of season and so on and so forth.
And also, from my experience dealing with some issues for middle school athletics, the team sizes, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, are just smaller than, because you don't have as much equipment as many coaches available. So the team's numbers are much smaller than they are, say, in high school. So you have many more people trying out, but you have to cut down to a much smaller number. So then, by the time they get to high school, they've kind of lost interest, and maybe that's where you're losing the amount. You could take more people on a high school football team than you can take on a middle school football team, correct?
Sure. I would say you can definitely take more on a football team at a high school level, but I think at the middle school level, not so much. But what is not disputable is how many students you can put out on the field at the same time for football. So I think what it is, is that-
Right, but to make the team.
Sure.
Or the girls' volleyball team, or the teams at the middle school level are more selective because there's just not, it's not as much, we can't incorporate as much on the team and practices and stuff as we do in high school.
Right, but again, what Mr. Treacle had mentioned earlier is that, that's why we do a fifth quarter in some of our sports, so we allow those individuals who may not see the actual playing time during the regular, or as much of the playing time, who still need to develop their skills, have a fifth quarter that does not count during the regular score or time period in order for those students to participate.
But they still got cut, the other group.
Right, I mean, right, so, I think that's-
At the high school level, they also offer, you know, there's more opportunity with JV, varsity, where we're just, we just have one, just one team.
Well, just while she's talking, I remember when my son tried out for Thornburg, there were 77 boys that went out, where they take 32. How many does Massaponix have on their team, which is the feeder to that? Their football team is, huh? See, so that's the point I think she was trying to make.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry if I misunderstood that, Ms. Graham. Thanks.
Mrs. Blalock?
Okay, I have two questions. First one is about the tournaments. When are y'all doing those now? Are those on Saturday still, or have we changed to a weeknight? Because that was an issue a few years ago that I've worked on with my community members. What are we doing with that now?
Our tournaments are during the week now, depending on the season, whether it be a Monday, or Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday. It depends on the season and the deal that we have with our officials' association.
I think that's something you need to poll the parents on, because it's my understanding the community does not like that. They like it on Saturdays, especially for parents who work up north, though they can make it, because I believe in the afternoons, it's still at four, it still starts at four. And they understand they have to miss a lot of the games, because, I understand they're early, but for the tournament, I just think that we need to relook at Saturday again. That was extremely unpopular in my district when that happened. And I remember talking to a few people, I forget who, but I think that's something that maybe if the Athletic Task Force could look at again, and if it comes back, that the weekday is working fine and the community prefers that, I think that's fine, but I think we need to ask our community what they want in that area. My second question, and it's a two-parter, and y'all are all athletic people, so you're going to know what I'm saying. Baseball and field hockey, that is, and that's the first part. Are y'all talking about it? I have never had a field hockey player in my house. I have a ton of athletes. We've played everything. I've been on everything he was talking about in middle school. I feel like I've done it, but I've never had a field hockey player, and I've never had a baseball player. But boy, do I hear about that. And the reasons I hear about it is they say that this is my sport for my child, my child loves this sport, and they feel like they miss it through their middle school years, so their feeder high school doesn't get the child as prepared as, say, a district that offers baseball. And say, your son, that's his thing, and we were talking about travel earlier, he's done it through his elementary years, then he gets to our middle schools, and we don't offer it. Is that talked about, and where are we with that, if anywhere at all?
Sure, it's very early on. It has been brought up this year, and Mrs. Blalock came in and gave a nice presentation about possible grants that are available to us.
Oh, good.
But it is something that is very early on, but it has been discussed and brought up in our meetings, and I'm sure we will continue into that.
Yeah, that's just something else, and I'm just, all I'm doing is relating what I hear from community members. The second part is following up on what I've just asked, and this is really going to push you on the spot, and I certainly don't mean to, but it's going to. In the, so you can put whoever you want up there. In the position of sixth-grade sports, or field hockey and baseball, what's your priority as Athletic Task Force? Which one's going first, if either? Okay, Mr. Wolf.
Let me, let me come up here, Ms. Blalock. Really, what I think what we're going to do is, we have talked more about sixth-grade inclusion than we have about the other two sports. The issues that typically come up with the other two, and we have discussed them, is field space and not having baseball fields. We have softball fields, but we don't have, we don't have those baseball fields, except for Spotsylvania Middle School and Freedom, who have that capability. The other middle schools do not. The other middle schools do not. So field hockey typically played in the fall. One that was typically played in the spring, fall?
I don't-
Fall. I got a bunch of athletic directors behind me. They should all just whisper in my ear right now, so it's in the fall. So, and we currently have girls basketball and girls soccer that's running in the fall. So there's some competing. It doesn't mean that it can't be worked out. But right now, probably if there, I don't want to say a preference while we're exploring, but I would say sixth grade participation would probably be the more easy of those options at that point.
Well, and as an athletic director in a middle school, I could see where that would just add a whole new thing to your, I mean, that would be a lot, just the maintenance of a field and everything to be added. So I'm not suggesting that you jump out and do it. I'm just letting you know the community definitely wants us to look into that at some point. And, but I've heard sixth grade as well, and so-
What has been helpful is Mr. Treacle mentioned, Ms. Blalock talking, coming in and mentioning different grants that could be available for equipment and so on and so forth. It's just possibilities.
Yeah, that's good. That's good to know.
I'm going to piggyback on the field hockey, baseball, because that's what I had written down as well. Field hockey is typically played in the fall, but it could, and this is just a thought, putting it out there, that if it was played in the spring at the middle schools, then some of the field hockey players from the high schools could possibly volunteer with the middle school kits as well. So therefore, building the skills and building that relationship with the athletes for them to be possibly moving on in the high school later on. But one other thing is, any thought in bringing in other divisions? Say Fredericksburg City, they have one middle school, or Caroline, they have one middle school, to participate with our athletes in a game, or even an exhibition game of some sort, be it any of the sports, but even just track and field. Just so that the students have some more competition, different, different competition, you know, with other groups of students. Because when they get to high school, they're not going to be competing only with Spotsylvania County. They're going to be, they're going to be competing with students across the state. So it might just kind of give them that background of other athletes as well.
Sure. Part of the development, and well, short answer to your question, yes, those discussions have taken place. I have met with members from Caroline, and I have not heard from the Fredericksburg in quite a while, but I know that that came up a few years ago. So, but part of that is, are they coming to us? Or if we go to them for their fields, then that adds to a transportation cost where right now, we're all just within our division. So, but I can say yes, that those discussions have taken place. So, but in regards to baseball and field hockey, I have, I have my notes.
Thank you. I'll just mention Fredericksburg City, because that's where I work.
Sure.
And the people I have spoken to over there said they would pay for transportation to come to Spotsylvania, because that way they don't have to travel as far to, and it would be, so it would be helpful for them. But I'm thinking it would be helpful for our students, because then they would have, it would be, just add on to their exposure. Yes. So thank you. Anybody else? Dr. Baker?
If I may, I do appreciate the focus that you all have on a number of different issues as it pertains to athletics, and I trust and appreciate that all of the considerations are with the lens of what is in the best interest of our students, irregardless of traditions, irregardless of, right now, logistical concerns and perhaps even fiscal concerns. And I would ask, as you explore not only the sixth grade sports, and I do think it might be a good idea to, although I'm sure the responses that you will get would be primarily from parents whose children are interested in playing sixth grade athletics, on the one hand. But I think exploring that from a community perspective is a good idea. But I also, I know that there's a lot of research that talks about, especially as you're, the early part of your presentation, you were talking about sixth grade transition and the importance of a focus on academics. Yet we, we know from research inherently that involvement in activities tends to lead to better academic progress, not a decline. And because of the stringent standards that you articulated, I think it's pretty clear you either are succeeding academically, or you're not on a team. So I would say, as you consider that, if sixth grade formalized sports are not in the near future, are there other, I do wonder about just involvement when that transition occurs from fifth to sixth grade, especially for students who have ability, who have a passion for that, that they are able to stay engaged as much as possible at the school level in being able to, if it's not organized sports, I know that there's intermurals have been discussed before, and I realize that it's an extra strain on resources. But I would ask you to consider, if you could do it and resources weren't the issue, what would you do? You know, what would you recommend? If you didn't worry about the coaches, or the hours, or the logistics, what would you do that would be best for students? And then if we don't have, it's not feasible because of the resources or because of the finances, we can then cross that bridge. But I would ask you, in terms of the taking those steps, is to continue to consider it without some of the barriers and look as narrowly through that lens of what is best for sixth grade students coming into our middle schools, despite the limitations and the barriers. And so, having seen it both ways, having seen them offered and seen them in abundance and seemed to be okay, and then seeing it here, and I understand some of the rationale, but just looking at it is, what's best for the future of our students?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Anybody else? Any more comments?
Well, we appreciate the feedback from the board, and we'll follow up in direction.
Thank you very much. Have a happy holidays. Okay, moving on to 6.04, Board Committee Reports. Does anybody have any reports to share with us this evening? I'm just going to give a brief summary. This past Friday, I went to a, it was the Urban Crescent, and it was a school board chairman, city, elected county people were elected, were invited to a Urban Crescent, which was a forum for funding for Virginia students. And it included boards of supervisors, city councilmen, and women, and mayors. And then, of course, school personnel. And now, it was just everyone putting forth something about what has happened with funding and how it has affected our school systems across the Urban Crescent, which is northern Virginia, all the way down kind of the 95 corridor, all the way to the Hampton Roads area. So there were people from all the different divisions and throughout Virginia in that Urban Crescent, talking about public schools and the lack of funding and the reduction of funding through the state over the number of years, therefore, putting more pressure on the locals to be able to fund schools. So really, nothing came of it, except for everybody sharing. So they didn't come up, I shouldn't say nothing came of it. There was no definite plan at this point in time, but it was a good way of sharing that across the state, everyone is in the same predicament with the reduction of funding from the state. And it looks like, you know, it's just people talking to their state representatives about bringing in with this new budget coming in, putting more money toward K-12 education. And a lot of people talked about pre-K, a lot of people talked about career in tech and special education being some of the driving forces in our funding, and we need more funding through the state. So that's what I did on Friday. Just wanted to make sure the board knew that I went to that program. Dr. Meyer?
Madam Chair, thanks for the, I thought of something I should have said earlier. The Northeast Region, the SBA Regional Spring Forum, will be in Falkir, but the date moved from March 8th to March 9th. It's on a Wednesday evening. So please mark your date. Save the date for March the 9th.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer.
I'll be attending, and that was, I came from our first, when I attended the first VSB A Board of Directors meeting, that came out. Also, I'll be attending an orientation in-service webinar this Friday for about an hour to receive further training. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, Dr. Martin, could you let us, make us aware of what is on the consent agenda, please?
On the consent agenda are the approval of the bus service for the subdivision North Club, the minutes of the November 23rd, 2015 regular meeting, and the December 1st, 2015 regional legislative reception meeting, and donations which are used on customary. Staff asked that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion, we approve the consent agenda.
A motion by Mr. Braswell.
I will second.
A second by Mr. Blaine. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, 6-0. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Action Item 8.01, New Finance and HR Management System. Ms. Gaines, and we've got a lot of people. Come on up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Thank you for the opportunity for staff to present this evening. As it pertains to the new proposed financial human resources system, which are independent, I do want to draw your attention, at your chair, you will see a red folder. And in this folder is entitled "New System," and we have included for you a copy of the PowerPoint as well as the 75-page RFP. This evening, we will share with you a brief presentation that will be co-led by myself, LaShawn Gaines CFO, Michelle Colbert, Executive Director of HR, Leah Underwood, IT Program Analyst slash Project Manager, Shannon Finley, Procurement Manager. I also want to take this time to recognize the remaining RFP Evaluation Committee members that are in the audience or maybe watching by the web. Thank you for your work. In addition, we have Kurt Stedham. He's a vendor rep for the company that we'll be recommending tonight. As we move forward, tonight's presentation will cover the following topics. Number one, the rationale behind the need for a new system. Number two, components of the proposed new financial and HR system. Number three, the procurement mechanism utilized and the proposed timeline. And finally, number four, we will share the results of the RFP and the next steps. At this time, I am pleased to turn this portion of the presentation over to Mrs. Underwood, who has been serving as the project manager and has done an outstanding job. Mrs. Underwood.
Thank you. Good evening. We have several reasons why we need a new system. The current system has been in operation for over 20 years. The school division's business needs outweigh the current system functionality. The current system has been modified to the extent where it's no longer easy to maintain and enhance. Also, our current ERP vendor no longer provides the support that we deem necessary. There are several components that make up the financial management and HR management systems. Ms. Colbert and I will highlight a few of these components. Within financial management, we have budget and forecasting, which is budget for FTEs, salary and benefits, as well as non-compensation budget lines. The new system will also give us the ability to do performance-based budgeting, multiple budget scenario comparisons, and budget entry either at the department or division level. Then we have payroll processing, which consists of contract pay, hourly pay, and time sheets, garnishments, direct deposit, W-2s, Affordable Care Act compliance, quarterly taxes, and benefit processing, which consists of VRS, life insurance, health and dental insurance, disability, Mark III, retiree health insurance billing, tax shelter annuities, et cetera. So in addition to these payroll components, the new system will allow employees to key time sheets to flow into payroll, allow us to add or delete an employee while processing the payroll, and give us the ability to undo a payroll without affecting our end users. We also have year-end processing. And there is a general ledger, which houses all of our financial transactions. Purchasing allows our bookkeepers to order goods and services. And with the new system, we will have an online approval of purchase orders by our department heads, and a vendor self-service portal, and a vendor contract bid system. Then we have accounts payable, which allows for invoice processing and vendor payment, including district travel. With the new system, we will have online, a new online conference travel system and the ability to send 1099s to the IRS. Another component is fixed asset system. Then we have reporting. So with the new system, all data can be saved to Excel or PDF by the end user. Reports can be viewed in graph and chart form, and we will receive out-of-the-box budget, revenue, and expenditure reports. There are some additional items that were selling points for me. Workflow alerts and email to improve communication between departments, online approval by principals and department heads, an audit of all data changes, reduce time to open and close the fiscal year, user-friendly front end, document scanning and attachment to employee and vendor records, and a strong relationship with multiple state agencies for state reporting. I will now turn it over to Michelle Colbert to discuss the HR management system.
Good evening. Please bear with my voice. As it has already been shared, the Office of Human Resources looks forward to the implementation of an enhanced system to provide better service and support to division employees and to enhance current processes, as well as maximize efficiency. The system interfaces with our current substitute calling system, ASOP, and it has its own application system. The workflow is an enhanced feature. When an applicant completes an application and secures a position in the division, his or her information from the completed application generates the employee record, which reduces the potential for human error through manual entry of a complete employee record. The employee self-serve module will support our current processes and features to include online acceptance of applications, online request of teacher transfer, time clock system, as well as access to salary and benefits, W-2s, et cetera. Moreover, the employee self-service has additional features, which includes an online enrollment for benefits and allows the employee to see his or her salary and benefit package for each school year comprehensively. Employees are able to go into the self-serve module and update demographic information such as name changes and address changes, and simply provide us with supporting documentations, while currently, this information is entered by staff. Both departments are excited about the position control module. The approved budget will reflect the FTEs in the system, and the Office of Human Resources will be able to better track who and when the positions are filled. Currently, we manage that through Excel spreadsheets. So we are really looking forward to the opportunity and the reporting capabilities that are associated with the system as well. At this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Finley to share more on procurement.
Thank you, Ms. Colbert, and good evening. This slide shows the three main, three main procurement vehicles that we had to choose from. The request for proposal was the most practical option for the district because it allowed us to put together a comprehensive scope of work that included all of the required functionality. As you can see, this slide shows the solicitation process. However, if you include all of the market research conducted by Ms. Underwood, this process has taken us a little over two years. For now, I would like to review these key dates with you. First is the RFP release date. Note that the drafting of the solicitation took three months. This allowed Ms. Underwood to conduct meetings with each department involved to find out what requirements and functionality were needed and were most important to each department, and include those in the scope of work. The proposal submission deadline and evaluation of responses. Once proposals were received, the evaluation process began. The evaluation process consisted of reviewing each proposal. Interviews were conducted with each vendor, a second scoring, negotiations, and finally, selecting the vendor that the evaluation committee deemed most qualified to provide the most robust system possible that would not only meet our immediate needs, but also allow us for growth within the next 10 to 20 years. All the work thus far has brought us to today, presenting for you our system, our choices for consideration. If approved, we are hoping to have the contract fully executed by December 1st so that preparation can begin immediately for the conversion, implementation, and training phase of the project. Finally, note that the go-live date is July 1st, 2017. This gives the project team a full 18 months for implementation, which we feel is very important not to rush. Thank you very much, and now I'd like to return it back to Ms. Gaines.
Moving along in the presentation. As shared by Mrs. Finley, the RFP procurement option used was very important. In selecting this method, the evaluation committee, which consisted of seven individuals from finance, HR, and IT, we identified five criteria. Criteria number one, solution functionality. This particular item was worth 40 points. This criteria was assigned more points than others because a division desires to procure a system that fully meets the needs of the division, from budget to payroll to HR to audit. The 37-page needs requirement that is enclosed in the RFP before you is very comprehensive. Criteria number two, project management. This was worth 20 points. This criteria was weighted second highest because staff believes in order to implement a brand-new system which impacts everything that we do, a detailed, comprehensive implementation is necessary. It must also include a thorough data conversion plan. A meticulous testing plan coupled with onsite training will be very invaluable. Criteria number three, cost. This criteria is important in that the new system must be within our available fiscal resources. Overall, staff was looking for the best quality at the best price. Criteria number four, experience with similar projects worth 15 points. For this criteria, staff wanted assurance that the vendor of choice had experience in working with school systems our size. The vendor we're recommending tonight actually has VRS as their client. Also Norfolk Schools and Newport News and many others. Criteria number five, interview worth 10 points. This process provided staff with an opportunity to ask clarifying questions, to see the vendors in action, as well as meet key players of their team, based on the total scoring of all of the evaluation committee members. Tyler Technology ranked number one. As we begin to wrap up today's presentation, this evening's staff comes before you with a unified front, finance, HR, and IT staff. We're recommending Tyler Technology as the vendor of choice. In looking at the slides before you, you can see we've taken due diligence. We've had demo presentations, interviews, site visits, reference checks, system security validation, and we've had thorough fiscal negotiations. This particular project would be funded through capital improvement funds for the software about 1.47 million. The annual operating cost, about 163,000. We also have guarantees in a contract that the annual operating maintenance cost would not increase over a certain amount. As it pertains to becoming more efficient, it is true that this new system will make finance and HR more efficient. Otherwise, we would not be making the recommendation. So, there is an expectation to be more efficient because vendors and employees and support staff will be empowered and will have access to information. However, now being able to do more and have greater functionality, access to data, the demand of the finance and HR team may be greater, and you may need more staff. In closing, this initiative is tied to the Division's strategic, strategic plan. Goal number one, prepare all students to be college and career-ready. Objective 1.4, execute exemplary financial practices that maximize the organization's return. Also, strategy 1.45, implement a new system by 2019. At this time, staff is recommending that you approve Tyler Technology as the system of record. If approved, this contract will remain in effect for the lifetime of the product, and we thank you for your time this evening, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
May I have a motion to approve the new finance and HR management system, please?
I move to approve the new finance and HR management system.
A second.
Motion by Mrs. Grant, second by Mrs. Blaylock. Okay. Discussion. Okay, comment, Mrs. Blaylock.
Fabulous job. We've had a chance to talk to some of you before, so a lot of our questions are answered, mine are answered. Fabulous, fabulous, fabulous job. It's a great way to hold it off for 18 months. I thought, I liked that idea. I, I think this is, was needed. This isn't a luxury in any way. You mentioned that we had had this system for 20 years. It's no longer working for us. We had to do something. So, great job. This has my full support.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to echo what Mrs. Blaylock said. You know, I've seen the system, and yes, we're way beyond the time. And I know that you were taking your time to do it right and do it right the first time. So, congratulations. We're moving ahead.
Mr. Blaine?
I'm impressed frankly with the, the outcome obviously, and would like to compliment frankly your whole staff. And I know that they've done an outstanding job. Thank you.
Any more questions, comments, discussion? Well, I'm going to echo my colleagues' wonderful presentation. You have worked very hard, and I am thrilled that we're not rushing into the implementation, that we're going to take our time and make sure that we're doing it right before we go full-fledged. So, nice job on that. Okay, I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of the new finance and HR management system, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, 6-0. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. Okay, informational items, usual and customary? Yes. Okay, moving on to 10.01, unfinished business. Is any, any unfinished business? Seeing none? Any 10.02, any new business? Okay, moving on to closed meeting. December 14th, 2015, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board conducts a closed meeting for the following purposes: Consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and consideration of student disciplinary appeals as permitted by Section 2.23711A2 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Blaine.
Second.
Second by Ms., Dr. Meyer. All those in favor of going into closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, 6-0. We are in closed session.
Merry Christmas to everyone. I mean, from closed session to open session.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Braswell. May I have a motion, a second, please?
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. All those to return to open session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? 6-0. Okay, certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. May I have a motion to certify the meeting, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Dr. Meyer, and a second?
That's yours.
Was that? Mr. Blaine? Okay, roll call vote, starting with Ms. Grant, please.
Grant, aye.
Blaine, aye. Braswell, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
6-0. And then, Dr. Martin, could you please read the items from the closed meeting, please?
Motion is that the school board accepts the recommendations of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, resignations, and retirements as presented in closed meeting and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
A motion by Dr. Meyer, a second by Ms. Grant. All those in favor of the items from the closed meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, um, nay, no, 6-0. And may I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Grant, and a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Blaylock. All those in favor of, of, of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, 6-0. And we are adjourned at 9:40.